Oh, thank you.
Hey you.
Hello.
And what is this in reference to?
This is a penalty for the 180 days which has never been enforced.
So it's actually the code, it's penalties for all of the zoning portion of the, um, yes.
So this is just the, well anyway.
Do it in order.
I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You want me to start with your call?
Sure. May Protem Labar.
Present.
Councilmember Alfieri here. Councilmember Case.
Here.
Councilmember Neil.
Here.
And Councilmember Zulawaga.
I am.
Thank you.
And on to number three of the agenda this evening, it's the council work session for the purpose of discussing the 180 day occupancy limitation in campgrounds and recreation vehicle, recreational vehicle parks. And we're going to go ahead and let Councilmember Neil lead the discussion this evening.
Thank you very much. To get started, can I just see a show of hands here, who is against removing the 180 days? I just want to see if there's anybody in the audience, okay? Against removing the 180 days?
I think they need clarification.
Uh, clarification. Right now, the ordinance that we are talking about in the work session is, uh, the language has been changed from, uh, temporary recreational seasonal use to a finite 180 days, uh, is how long the, uh, an RV can stay in an RV campground. We are considering, uh, removing the 180 day limitation. That's one of the, the topics. I'm trying to just get a sensing of who here is against removing it? Who here is for keeping the 180 days? So let me be very specific because I've asked two questions. Well, I've asked two questions in one, that's why. Let me try it again. Who here is in favor of keeping a time limit of 180 days, uh, stay? Okay, so everybody else here is for the removal of the 180 days. And Suzanne.
Assumed? Are there anybody in the middle?
Well, that's true, they could be in the middle, haven't made up their mind. Suzanne, did anybody raise their hand to cast vote? Can we look at Zoom and see if anybody said that they are in favor of keeping? Because I don't want to spend a lot of time arguing one thing if the majority of the people showing up for a position, um, are all in favor of one particular point.
No hands raised.
Okay, then I'll, I'll make it as fast as I can. Thank you for, for indulging me in that few minutes.
Here is now.
Did you not know what your question are?
Okay. Yeah, if you could just give me a poll, I, I think it'd be interesting for me. But what I want to explain to everybody and to the council members initially, I, I, I went into this thing asking, why do we even have a 108, 180 day limit? Because I was, um, not aware that that was a part of the new language change. I had not done my job as a council member, I'll be, be honest. I was focusing on the single family, multifamily zoning. I didn't even look at the definitions that saw that the, it, the language had been changed to something concrete, 180 days. I own two RVs, um, have my whole life. One of them would easily be able to handle full timing. So I was like, why are we doing this? We've got somebody feedback.
My volume is off. Now my. Volume on my computer is off and my mic is off.
Got you up there.
Maybe unmuted on here too.
Is it your phone?
Test one, two. That sounds better.
Yeah.
That sounds better, okay. So when, well, even before that, when Hillary asked me to, to, to go ahead and lead this exercise, I went into it saying, why, why do we have the 180 days? I, I see my RV as capable of being there for a full timing. It just didn't make any sense to me. But then I did a little bit of, of superficial research and the first thing that came to my mind was, and, and I spoke about this very briefly to council, wanting to protect the systems, the water and the sewage systems. And in fact, I reached out to all three of the RV park owners, um, and discussed what I was thinking. And there was no objection from them, um, having some sort of a mitigation so that if you had the water hose attached or the sewer hoses attached, that, you know, they, they would require some sort of a heat tape to be wrapped around it. Or, um, I think it was Jeff said, do we have to do that exact solution? What if we just have them disconnected, they're not heated? And I said, I don't care what the solution is, just something to mitigate the exposure of the, um, the systems, the city system. So we don't have any water spilling out or sewage spilling out. And, and the, the park owners all said, that is a piece of cake. So that's where I left it in, uh, for a, a little bit of time, but then I kept asking, why the 180 days? You just don't pull 180 days because Sally and I had talked about it for quite some time. There is a lot of pressure on the planning director to go to 180 days. And it, it turned out it was coming from a national level. So I wanted to find out, okay, well, what is that national level saying? Who is it and, and why? And what I did learn, um, it is the RV Industry Association, RVIA, which is the seal you see on all RVs when they're made. They're the ones that have been putting the push on municipalities to take the undefined, um, temporary seasonal, um, recreational term and make it a hard 180 days so it could be enforced. I actually was told, yep, it's 180 days. And I heard the same things that I've heard a couple of times. Well, it's a fire, people can, the doors are 30 inches or 20 inches. To me, that's on the owner of the RV. If they choose to live full time in something with a very small door and it, they're at risk, that's their decision. I'm not, I don't think it's right for us as council to, to dictate, you know, for their safety reason. So I kept digging a little bit more, a little bit more, and we, we talked about water taps and there are, there could be some tax implications. There, there's a lot of things that could be, but I, I kept wanting to find out why 180 days. And, and I know this is a long introduction, but it'll, I'm coming around to the one request because I too support getting rid of the 180 days. But with a condition that I think when you hear me out, you, somebody may say, oh, that's probably an okay condition. And I even think the RV park owners would say that's a good condition. But I actually researched it all the way up to the, the government head agency of RVIA. There is a person there, uh, if you want his name, I can give you his contact information. He's a wonderful person. He even volunteered to come down and talk to it. But it really boils down, he started the spiel, well, they're not insulated properly, they're, the doors are too small, yada, yada, yada. He said, all of that is on the RV owner. Tell me something that I as a city, I mean, I'm looking out for my citizens, not the RV park owner or the RV owners. What as a councilman should I be concerned with? And he said, well, the one thing you need to consider is the, where the 180 days came from. And most people don't realize there is a engineering reason behind it. There are four systems onboard RVs that are built to a different specification than mobile home parks, houses, everything. Those four systems are the air conditioner, the refrigerator, the furnace and the hot water heater. They have a design specification to only operate 180 days per year. Other, other, other than that, you're overstressing the system. So you're, you're wearing things out and they can become a fire danger. So I said, okay, okay. So what we have is a potential fire danger that could affect the citizens' properties around them. So I'm, I, I'm trying to find out, how can we mitigate those systems? And if you think about it, the system, systems are all tied to the propane, it's the, the fire systems. Air conditioning is, is not tied to the propane. So that one, I don't even think about. But the refrigerator, the furnace and the hot water heater can wear out. And it, it, I was trying to figure out, well, what's a magical number? What's it tied to? Well, the propane tanks are, have to be inspected after 12 years to be recertified. And then every five years after that. So from my perspective, I think we need to take a look at the risk and protecting the citizens against fire that would affect the, the other properties, not the RV owners or the RV properties. That, that's their decision that you guys make if they want to live full time or they want to have a park. But I think it would be wise to send a, a request back to the planning commission to come up with some sort of language that would require an RV that's 12 years old or older, if they are full timing, to have their three, um, propane based systems inspected. If they come back with a safe inspection from a, a Camping World, uh, um, ProTech RVs, that those companies are putting their license on the line that's saying it's safe, then we know we had, we have done our due diligence as a city council to protect the other landowners against fire by simply having a very small set of, of RV, uh, full timers that own a 12-year-old vehicle, get inspected at the 12-year mark and then every five years thereafter. And that would be the mitigation to protect the citizens, protect the city against liabilities. And that would be the only, um, condition I would put on removing the 180 days. Other than that, it's up to, up to the RV park owners to set how long they want to allow. And that's my introduction, Kelly.
My question to that, and one of the things that I've been taught over my 24 years in municipal government experience in various roles is if you're going to impose a regulation, then you need to always consider enforcement and how you plan to enforce that. My question is, how do, I mean, that's, I, I still don't see that that's our role. And I would suggest that enforcement would be cumbersome and, um, maybe even random. I, I, I just, my question is always enforcement.
And I think we may want to think about how the county assessor does the, the inventory for assessing the property. The same time they, it, it's based on honor. They, they turn to the RV park owners. They ask, have you got anybody that's full timing or any of the RV? They've got an easy inventory of the, the, the age of the unit. It, it's going to be such a small population, uh, out of their entire, uh, park that you, you're talking two, three people at most would, in, in any given year, would need to be inspected. And it wouldn't take much to have, they'd have to just sign a certification. We inspected, they showed us the receipt that they had those systems inspected, we're good.
But how, how do you police that? I mean, it's, it's, I, I can, the, the voluntary compliance, I don't know, it's, it's going to get lost. And, and I, I just don't, still don't see that as our role. I think that's the role of the, um, RV owner to be the owning and living in and a, a unit that is safe. I, I don't know. I just, I don't see how the enforceability is there.
You're rusty, um, I see. Is this just a free exchange or?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, um, I tend to agree, I think that we're, I have to look at the standpoint of what involvement does the city have in terms of private property and the transactional relationship between the RV park and their residents? And the sort of things that you're talking about, to me, come under the umbrella of insurance. Each one of those RV owners has insurance. And I'm going to guess that the insurance companies have a standard that they require from the RV owners in order to underwrite them. Now, if our, uh, RVIA wants to have that sort of enforcement, I think it's going to trickle down through an insurance provider who wants to protect their liability. I think that's really where it's going to come from, uh, in a, in a practical sense. I don't think it's the role of government. I'm certainly not in favor of, of putting restrictions that each one of these, um, RV park owners, they can institute that sort of thing if they want to amongst their members to, to create a sense of safety or standard for themselves. But that's their business, I think. If there's going to be a claim, if there's going to be a fire, it's going to go through each one of those owners' private insurance. That, that's the doorway, that's the gatekeeper that I see. And even though it's admirable to kind of, to be concerned about fire safety, I think each one of those property owners, once again, goes back to insurance and back to the fact that they know what the vulnerabilities are. They live that lifestyle from what some of the testimony we had last, uh, last time is, they lived it for many years. So they know their weak systems, they know these things. That, that would be my contention. And I think I'm in favor not only of removing this 180 day, but go back and remove the penalty. Because that's the sticking point that I saw was, well, we have this unenforced penalty. It's this imaginary Damocles sword over a lifestyle of people who choose to live that type of affordable living. And I just think it's, it's not necessary. So we would solve our problems if we remove this 180 day and remove the penalty in wherever it is in the code that links it to this 180 days and we're done.
So you. Just quickly, I just want to remind all the council that the topic of the work session is the 180 day rule alone. It is not about the safety of the RVs, it is not about the penalties, it is not, it is simply whether or not we keep or remove the 180 days. If safety or other issues come up, those, those are separate work session or agenda items. So I, I see how you want to tie safety into.
I thought they were completely tied.
But safety is safety no matter how many days they're with us, right? So whether, if you, if safety is the issue, that's, that's whether they stay one day or two.
Well, no.
But, but we are looking at, is the rule going to stay in the ordinance of 180 days or not? That's the rule we're looking at.
And, and I think I was looking at, if we removed it, it would be removed with a condition for those that are 180. And remember, there's a big difference between 1, 10, 15. 180 days is what the systems are designed to operate on annually. And, and if you're full timing, it's twice that. So you're, they're wearing out at a much faster, uh, speed, which is why they become the safety hazard. And Robert, I, I've listened to, you know, the, it's up to the RV owners and, and the, the, um, RV park owners. Well, I'm talking about protecting the citizens that are not the RV, the, the property owners that own houses around the RV parks that an RV's insurance policy, even if it's maxed out at a million dollars, isn't going to cover any two houses or three houses or four houses if you have a major fire that spreads out. That's what I'm trying to protect is, is the property around the RV park, not the RV part itself. Just like we have ordinances about smoking. I could care less whether somebody smokes and if they want to, you know, take the risk on cancer, that's up to them. But the government has stepped in over and over again. Secondhand smoke is where the government has a right to protect people. This is kind of secondhand fire, I'm protecting those around.
My problem with the fire argument is that a fire could happen for any reason, instantaneously, the moment they pull into the park.
Agreed.
I mean, it's not.
Agreed.
So I'm, all I'm trying to say is just be careful what rabbit holes you guys go down and remember the purpose of the ordinance, why we're here. So, and I hear what you're saying, but I just, I felt like the propane and suddenly the water and suddenly the, so I'm just trying to say, hold on, just, just hold on. And what is, what is the purpose of why we're here and the, the, the direction that we need to give staff?
I thought.
So, so you're, and you're, it's fine, but I just, I felt like I was getting a little lost of, now, now am I worried all about the propane tanks and what's happening? Because I feel like that happens on day one. You know, the, the water happens on day one, but we're looking at 180 days. So I see your purpose of the lifespan of the system.
Three systems that would be overstressed, that have propane, that are potentially a higher risk of fires than your standard, uh, RV users that are using it seasonally temporarily. You know, you're not exceeding the 180, you're not overstressing. And I did not include the air conditioning. I mean, that's one of the systems that can mechanically wear out and start a fire. But I'm trying to be realistic in Woodland Park, air conditioning.
Right.
Not hardly.
And then I do circle back with Kelly and I do agree that, is that our job? I'm pretty sure the parks want to regulate the safety of their parks and those vehicles. And as do the propane companies, water company and electric companies. But, so I, I'll let you all carry on. I just, I just, I felt like it was getting a little muddled in my opinion. Go ahead.
So first and foremost, I'd like to say thank you very much for all of the research you did. I think we all learned something new about where the 180 days came from.
Absolutely.
The funny thing is, there's hardly anybody here that has showed up to care about it. It's like, I'm already going in for nobody.
Always interested in random facts, who would have thought? I did want to clarify, when you talk about the propane tanks or systems, is it the tanks that are the concern or the system failure?
The systems themselves.
Okay. Two things on, on that. The struggle that I have is that, um, although we can argue that requiring some sort of inspection to ensure the safety of it, we don't require the same of, of residential properties where they have just as many systems. And I'm not a builder, um, but I imagine furnaces and hot water heaters that are placed in permanent residence probably have some sort of working lifetime as well. There are certain things that could cause those systems to be inspected for safety. But unless the homeowner triggers that, we don't have the authority to go in and say, okay, you've been in your house for three years. We need to inspect these systems for safety. So I feel like we're unequally applying some sort of requirements to the RV residents versus regular stick-built home residents. But it's still a permanent residence regardless.
And, and I think there's a piece of information that may have been lost because I, I get it. The home systems are actually, the, the materials, the, the thicknesses of the walls, the tanks and everything on residential systems have a, a greater thickness, if you will. I don't have all the specs. He just said homes are, are, systems are built to sustain being used 365 days a year. RV systems, the specs that the system builders are held to, their assumption is that they would only be run 180 days. They're designed to only go 180 days. In fact, the warranties are null and void if you use it full time. A lot of people don't realize that in the fine print. I'm just providing information. I want to get rid of the 180 days. I just wanted to make it so that there's no risk to the city, no risk to, to the landowners around them. If, if we do something, just put some sort of a requirement that they be inspected to try to protect the people around. But I'm, I'm all for getting rid of the 180 days. And I interrupted you because you had a couple of other things.
I, I was just going to say on that point of the surrounding property owners, as Mayor Protem Labar alluded to, there is some burden on those property owners themselves to ensure their property. There are plenty of things that can happen to damage their property that others can't be held responsible for. Fire being one of the biggest ones here, um, just because somebody starts a wildfire, that homeowner is the one responsible for carrying insurance to make sure that they're made whole if something happens to their house. So, but I, I agree, I'm, I'm in favor of getting rid of it as well, so.
I'm going to just interrupt for a positive reason. There's pizza in the back.
Stop everything.
It's a work session, so it's casual.
I'm going to tell everybody that.
I mean, we can go down and get a piece.
You absolutely can, yes.
I would just like to make a point.
And Hillary, to make this even a better piece of information, I just wanted to provide the research. I, I knew everyone, because I've reached out to you, we all want to get rid of it. I just tried to do, you know, why does the industry have this? I found there is a reason. Do we want to take any action to mitigate it or not? Give the planning, uh, planning commission guidance to go back, come up with some creative language that mitigates it or not?
Right.
I, I'm sensing four out of five are saying no, so.
Well, the difficulty with mitigating it, you know, I appreciate the concerns you raise and I appreciate the reasons for limitations. But the danger with the city attempting to mitigate it further is the more mitigation we attempt to put on particular items like propane or water or gas, it just creates further liability for us when someone does not follow some type of regulation we want to attempt to put on them. So.
And that we cannot enforce.
Yeah, that's difficult to enforce. So, yeah.
And, and you can never, there's no way to ever eliminate risk. It's inherent in, in everything and, and it just is part of life. And, you know, full-time RVing, people, people sell everything they own and purchase a, a beautiful recreational vehicle and they travel the world for years and years and years and live in them. And so I think they, you know, maybe they're not aware, maybe they are aware of the risks they're taking. But I don't think that's our responsibility to instill that knowledge. That's their responsibility to, to, um, know what they're doing and, and know the risks and accept those risks and live the way they choose. So I, I support eliminating the 180 days without any restriction. And I also would like to, to challenge the council that we also need to address section 18, 7.75, oh, 1020, 30 and 40, as Robert had brought up before. And if that requires a different.
It does.
We could bring that back because this is where the, the violation of penalty is in our zoning codes that kind of drove this ending up in this ordinance. So I'd like to see us address that at some time in the future.
Sure. So.
Thank you.
I'm, go ahead.
I was just going to ask the attorney, is that something that, um, I mean, I understand that this work session is about us giving direction to the city staff and the attorney, is that right?
Yeah, and our city attorney who's participating with this particular issue is joining us by Zoom and that'll be Nina.
Okay.
And, um, yes.
So I asked Nina the question rather than Jeff?
Yes.
Oh.
And she's on Zoom live and ready.
Okay. So Nina, my question for you is, um, if we do in fact give the direction to the attorneys to redraft the removal of this 180 days, can that draft also at the same time address the, the removal of the penalty?
No. Oh, of the particular.
Yeah, the, the penalty that, that is here before us here that, um, reg, that has caused this whole thing to be put on the, uh, to have a limit on it because they didn't, the city didn't know how to enforce something that hasn't been enforced. So if we just remove the penalty for enforcing something that's, that we're not putting a limit on, then it's done. It's all done. Can it all be done in one document, one, um, removal? Can it all be done in one document, one removal? Hi.
I have. This is, I know it's a work session that was designated for a particular purpose. However, the any draft ordinances will have to come back in front of you as a council. So I think there's no time is better than a work session where you're all agreeing on either options or certain types of draft ordinances that will then be noticed in a future public hearing, a future public meeting.
Nina, there's something funny going on with your microphone. We're hearing a lot of scratching.
I'm sorry, I was moving my paper a lot. I was saying that I believe there's no better time than an, you know, a work session other than a regular meeting to advise staff what to draft in an ordinance if more than one person is going to, as I believe that's your policy. And the ordinance, the draft ordinance itself will be back on a public meeting and publicly noticed. So I don't see a problem with that.
Do you feel like she answered your question?
Yeah, clearly. Yeah, she said, yeah, you can do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I guess Kelly brought up that issue. That's two of us talking about, do any of the rest, you want to weigh in on the idea of what you think about that removal of the penalty?
I agree with what you've proposed.
Sure.
But if adding a condition is outside the purview of just removing the 180.
Of the workshop session. Yeah, so I think what Nina's saying is we can give direction to staff to remove the 180-day portion of the ordinance. And when that is brought back, then we can address the penalty. Nina, correct me if I'm wrong, because the the work session today doesn't include removal of penalty to, but it goes hand in hand. So.
I think what's being the same is we can talk about it all now.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. Right now is ideal time to talk about it all.
But isn't this penalty clause pertaining to the entire zoning?
I think it does, so.
Well, we would have to address the removal of of it from zoning. That's where it would have to be removed.
So we could ask the staff to look into it.
Right.
And see what portions.
I think the problem is that 1875030 touches more than just the 180-day limitation. It is grander than that. So it touch, this is a penalty for other violations as well. So if we remove that, we are now removing that certain penalty from other violations of the code that we are not discussing this evening.
Yeah, I wouldn't be supportive of that. I mean, specifically finding where it is in the ordinance or the code enforcement that specifically talks about the limitation being 180 days.
Oh, that's what we're, yeah.
Not just, not just the one that we passed this last year. I'm talking about where it is back and when was it Sally that this was initially created that that's caused your office not to be able to act on it? When when did that first get an issue?
Definition for an RV or RV park has always included the word short-term, temporary or transient use. So it's been in the code since the 90s. I went back to prior to 96. It's pro, I didn't go to the 1969 original zoning ordinance number 46, but I can do that. But it is, it's, it's been in the code for many, many years to have temporary, short-term, interim, transient use.
And and that's what we're suggesting needs to go.
And so you want to pull out not just the 190 days, but also those wiggle worm terms for short-term use.
Yeah, I don't know that it's serving the community to have it in there. It's been like, as I suggested earlier, it's been like a sword over their head for years. It's like, let's just get rid of it. Let's get rid of it. Let's move forward. We give people peace of mind, they can continue with their life and we can, we already recognize we goofed.
Well, I think I think we need to be conscientious of we're here only on the 180-day. That though, that language is it's it's the 180 days what's trying to define the short-term use. So we need to ask Nina, is it appropriate that we ask for the entire language of short-term to be quashed? Or can we only address the 180-day which is attempted to define the short-term?
I feel like I feel like you can't, I can understand the other two topics that you got brought up, if you all want to limit the discussion, but you really can't talk about the 180 without coming to where it came from, which is, as Sally said, the, you know, short-term transient, that that's where 180 days came to further define what transient means.
Right.
Short-term intermittent, temporary. If you remove all those languages, that kind of takes away the whole definition of the of what we're talking about. But that's, maybe that's what is.
So is it all right if that is council's intent to give that direction despite the title of this workshop being the 180-day?
I believe in that limited circumstance, definitely, because you can't look at 180 days without kind of seeing where it came from, which is that it is short-term transient. You know, the 180 days came to further define those terms.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
My only other comment is most of we've heard has been in support of rescinding of this. Is there anybody who has a concern to the contrary who wants to keep it? And can we hear why they want to keep it? Is that a value?
Yeah, I'm hoping that we might have. Is there anybody on Zoom that has raised their hand? Okay, great.
Yeah, there are two hands raised and I believe a member of the audience. So what I'd like to do is.
I'm sorry.
You're you're not on.
Yeah.
The paper I gave you, that's the poll that Rob did.
Right. Okay. So there was also a poll to your questions, but I'd of keeping or rescinding. But I'd just like to remind you that and for the audience too, the poll is not necessarily representative of our constituents of 8,000. So for the purposes of making a decision, but so I wasn't necessarily going to take public comment tonight because I already had a feeling where this was going. And I want to be conscientious of everyone's time. We still have several executive sessions this evening. So Ms. Lundey, if you would like to come up to the podium, I'm going to.
You'd, if you're comfortable not wearing it, that's fine. So but I am going to limit you to five minutes. Yeah, I made little notes so that I wouldn't make myself.
Sure. And then just quickly for the Zoom audience, I will be pulling you into the meetings as well so that you can address.
Is it on?
Address the council as well.
Okay, is this on?
It is.
Yes.
Okay. So I guess Valerie Lundey, 1450 Eagle Trace Court, Woodland Park. My first, I'm not going to say this, what would have sounded like a snarky comment, so I'm just not going to go there. I I will say that that one of the complaints that I heard, sorry, or concerns, that I think it was from the owners more than anything else, was was or some people that posted on surveys that said there was a concern about current residents that they'd be kicked out. In that whole discussion, when this was going on through the whole planning commission, that was never something that was said. It was always said that current people would be grandfathered, always. So it was never even on the table. Okay. The it is possible, I mean, I would, I would contend that it is possible to consider, and again, whether or not you want to, you know, totally get rid of it or just let all the people that are there now, so it doesn't impact their business right the second, that they they're they are grandfathered and it can be a specific thing in the in the ordinance. Yeah. Now the question becomes, do you link it to specific people or lot sites? Is it just the current owners? I mean, there's multiple options in that if you do that very and explicitly fill it out. I personally have a concern relative to removing a day limit completely. That's right now, the parks are in a commercial, I mean, community commercial zone. That's that's what they're there for. And they, the people live, the people living full-time, and I realize this is not metered water and how is it counted in the city allocation and tap fees? It's not. And there's a permanent residence that has no tax. I have permanent residence, I have a tax. There's nothing in there for that. So I have a concern with that. It and one thing I think everybody should consider or remember is if the city completely removes all time restrictions in campgrounds, you could have, it goes back to what it was, you could have what I would consider unintended consequences. That and that is that either the current or future proprietor, owner of the campground could decide to bring in park models. The, you know, wheeled tiny houses, park models. That would could effectively have the long-term effect of turning the campground into the equivalent of a mobile home park without having to comply with any of the regulations listed in Title 16. I I'm just saying, it was such a sensitive issue within the community, whatever, a year ago, year and a half ago. And and the one location already has some that are they're used as cabins. So it's not like they don't exist in the parks right now. That's a concern. I will also say that because of the comp plan, I saw saw survey results recently and there one of the questions was whether or not any of these things, RVs, recreational trailers, park models should be allowed in a campground or RV park for more than 180 days in a calendar year. That was one of the questions. The yes responses was 43%. The no responses from the people that did in the city was 53. There were a number of people that didn't answer either way. Okay. And remember, I mean, yes, I know, we're home rule, all that. But Teller County, they have very tight restrictions on this. If you can be, if it's vacant land, you can stay 14 days, you need a permit. If it's on improved property, you can stay 14 consecutive days and 30 with six, in six months. If you own the property and you're on your own, you can stay in a in an RV-type situation for 60 days over 12 months. So and there's lots of other counties in the state that have those kind of restrictions. So don't think that and and city locations. So don't think that it's not happening anywhere in Colorado. There was a strong preference in public comments relative to trying to do the multifamily thing or quote unquote affordable, attainable, I think is a better word, housing for multi-family by apartments or duplexes. I will add one thing, if y'all really, I just are interested in statistics or numbers relative to the real safety numbers, there is an organization called, they're, they're, the National Fire Protection Association, they estimate approximately 20,000 RV fires a year that and some of them are not reported actually, but they do split. They have a report that just came out in December of 2020 relative to those numbers. And I'm bringing this up, Randy, because you said something about fire. The with they and they divided it so that one, one, there's a structure. So if that is a, if a RV is parked, and so it's considered a structure or a vehicle, so that's it's in motion. Okay? Two-thirds of the of the fires were were in a vehicle mode, a third of them was was stationary. And now they do note in their, in this report that many of the RV fires get listed as vehicle regardless. You got to code it right for it to show up as a structure. Okay? And it's they are not, some of them are not real good at it. I will also say that the majority of fires in their statistics for this report say that it's in models made between 1999 and 2008. The average age is 16 years of of an RV that has has this type of a has an issue. Structure fires tend to be the top items due to wires and cables, flammable combustible liquids and gases, materials like plastic and fabric, causes our electrical failures, mechanical failures, a heat source too close to combustibles, because whether you like it or not, there's a significant number of RV owners that use space heaters, whether they should or not, just it's a poor choice. But so from and and then the other thing they noted, which is kind of disturbing, any of the vehicles, I believe it was, it has been since, oh, gosh, I can't remember the starting year, they are, they have, they're required to come out of the factory with a smoke alarm in them. Of course, in the ones that that they've looked at and actually ones that had deaths in them, 84% of those, their smoke alarms were disabled. Now, that's personal choice also. However, it's still real. Okay? With the most common and people that died, the most common death times were in the middle of the night, which makes sense. And yeah, you kind of would want a smoke, a smoke detector. If, then understand also that a fire that like even a stove fire would that would, that would take a while to do something to your house, you got could have 30 to 60 seconds in a, in a, in a RV. So I realize it is personal choices. January and February are the highest number of months for it, which makes sense. It goes with the space heater thing. And and the West Coast ones, West Coast is 40, is 40, 40% of the those issues.
I don't mean to be rude to you.
I know, I just, I watch it because Rusty brought up the stats.
Sure.
There is a full report and if anybody really wants to read it, I can give you a reference to it. But it, I mean, it isn't, I personally think as a liability to the other property owners, it's a non-trivial thing, the the safety thing. Personal opinion.
Thank you very much.
I would welcome you to send to council your your link. That would be, thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and I don't think there are any other audience members in person. And I'm going to go ahead and go to Zoom now and Mr. Nakai. He has his hand up and.
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can.
Great, thank you. Mike Nakai, Woodland Park. So if I heard most of the arguments tonight correctly, they kind of center along personal responsibility that these folks, you know, can basically take this upon themselves to live in the RVs on a permanent basis. So if I, I guess I would ask the question, why do we even participate in the Pike's Peak Regional Building Codes? Because by the same logic, you could say, we don't want to put those onerous governmental restrictions on a permanent residence that are stated in the Pike's Peak Regional Building Codes. They're overbearing, they're a burden, they make the houses cost too much, and the burden should be placed on every individual. Every individual should know all of the details of the building codes, why certain things are the way they are. Why is it that you probably haven't walked into an apartment or a home in the last, that has been built in the last 100 years, that you have to go from the bedroom to the door and you have to go through the kitchen? You just won't find that, but you will find it in most RVs. Okay? Many, if any of you have ever been in a mobile home, you will notice that even as of probably 50 years ago, they made them put an emergency door in that back bedroom so that they wouldn't have to go through the kitchen. Because as most of you know, most home fires are caused in the kitchen. So let's put the burden on every homeowner. Let's not be a responsible community and try to establish standards for permanent dwellings. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development has stated very clearly in their 2016 brief that RVs and campers are not suitable as permanent dwellings. But you guys can do what you want if if you want to essentially put the burden of safety on the individuals. And by the same logic, I just say, let's take that the next, the next step and 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 let's exit from from Pike's Peak Regional Building Codes. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nakai. I'm going to go ahead and go to Bob Volpe, who also has his hand up on Zoom.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can.
This is just a point of information for Rusty about his condition to have older RVs inspected. It's taken me, I, I have an RV, I have a dual axle, 1983 travel trailer, and I have a new vehicle to tow it with that doesn't have a brake control, so I had to make an appointment with Pro-Tech to have a brake control installed. It's taken three and a half months before I can get my appointment. So if you think somebody's gonna be able to go down there and get an inspection just off, just whenever they want, it's not gonna happen. They, they're gonna have to make an appointment, and it's gonna be months before they can get it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, I just see that our city attorney had something that she mentioned in chat, and I'd like her to go ahead and reiterate that verbally for us, please.
Oh, thanks, Mayor Tim. I, um, I just wanted to say, just to clarify my previous statement, that question that you had, asked me about the violations, I feel that, seeing that there's, you know, 10 minutes left in the work session, I don't feel that there was enough direction for us in that respect, and that's probably better for a future discussion, but I do still feel that, as I said before, anything related to, you know, not specifically the 180 days, but the timeframes, or just temporary transient, that, that direction would make sense, and or maybe it's taking that and then going to another discussion in the totality of this ordinance, but just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, great, did, did council understand that?
No, you're, you're breaking up again because you're getting a lot of scratch in there. Are you now saying, if I?
I, I can reiterate.
Would you do that? Yeah.
I'm so sorry, I was supposed to be there.
It's okay, we can do, we can talk about the 180 days and the language that is connected to that, but we did not discuss the removal of penalties well enough to have that be a direction to staff at this work session. So we either need to have another work session with that, or put it as an agenda item to further discuss penalty removal that touches the 180-day rule, so.
What, seeing we're all here, isn't, I understood Sally to say that she would or could research the origin back to, what were the two years you said, 69 and 96? So Nina, if she's able to get the actual, where it's in the code, in this research time, is there any reason that can't just get put in there? We can have, when it becomes a proposed ordinance rescission, then we can have that next discussion about that? Would that be kind of a timely way not to?
Yes, correct, correct. I just, I, I just meant conclusive direction, because we're not, I seeing that there's only a few minutes left is not a conclusive direction on a certain way or the other, but, but yes, I mean Sally's done a lot of research on this, and she's done a memo about it, and when it comes back on in front of you guys, you're gonna discuss it, it's gonna be open in the public again as to this issue.
If I may, I think what, just so that we know what we're talking about specifically, the 180 days that we're discussing this evening came out of Ordinance 1383 Series 2020, which was where we just, we, the original purpose of that was to identify the single family in a multi-family zone, the two different zones that were multi-family. And in there, in Section 1806 dot 405 and 18 dot 06410, is where it talks about the 180 days in that ordinance. I believe that's what we're wanting to rescind, is that portion of that ordinance. We put a moratorium in place, Ordinance 1392 Series 2021, for 12 months so that we could address those provisions of this specific ordinance, 1383 Series 2020. The other topic comes out of the zoning regulations and needs further discussion and consideration for future. If we could finish up what we've been working on with regards to the moratorium in the 1383 and the 180 days, then we could take on the bigger task of the zoning regulations that were just, that are the second component of our discussion this evening. Does that make sense and help any at all?
Makes sense to me.
Thank you.
Counsel, are you all comfortable with, you, you follow what Kelly was saying? Yeah, okay, so.
Well, let me give it back, so maybe I don't. We're, we're giving guidance to the attorney to come back and simply, that section of the paragraph that has 180 days, which was inserted in there instead of the temporary season or whatever, that language is gonna change, and that's the only thing that we're talking about right now, providing guidance. We are not talking about, we're not having any discussions right now, giving guidance to do anything with removing penalty.
Correct.
Zoning penalties, because that's what 1875 oh three zero is. There would be no zoning penalties, so we're not doing that.
Correct. Not at this time, but we could certainly give staff direction that we consider that for a future work session and discussion, to look at that piece, because it's a bigger piece. It, it, it affects more than just the recreational vehicle topic.
Sure.
So, but the moratorium is in place with reference to Ordinance 1383, which was why we've been having these discussions in this work session.
Correct.
So if we could take one piece at a time, as the mayor pro temp suggested, then maybe we could have a bigger conversation about the other piece and do it in a more prepared manner.
Absolutely.
Aren't we actually doing two things, though? One is to rescind it, so therefore the moratorium's gonna go away. So if we rescind it, the moratorium will also disappear.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Yes, unless council feels that if there is any other issue in regards to that rule that you also wanted to see changed, or, but that's, that would be for a different work session.
Bigger topic.
But right now, it's just to give staff direction through consensus of removal of the 180-day or stay of the 180-day, and the moratorium will then be able to be lifted because we have made a decision on that particular topic.
And at that time, we'll also have findings from, from Sally's office in terms of what it looked, what the bigger picture looks like in terms of the code issue.
At some time, yes, I think it's a bigger project, because it's a bigger, it's, it's the zoning regulations.
Right, so you wanna know, we can, this, this is not a part of the work session, so we would need another work session or an agenda item to then give staff direction to say, we want to understand what, what the penalty of 1875 zero three zero touches in all of zoning, not just the 180-day.
That's good.
So, so we can, council at any time can bring that as a work session or put it on the agenda item for discussion, so.
They can go, can it go on as an agenda item or just on a council meeting?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but I would, I would give them at least a chance before this, not on the sixth, I would give them at least the following, just so that they can come well prepared with all of the regulations that it touches, because it may be numerous, I don't even know, so, but, so, I think that we have consensus to give staff direction to, that we would like the 180-day rule removed from the current, I lost my word, I wanna say statute, and it's not.
Ordinance.
Ordinance. And, and then we can have future work sessions or council meetings on other topics, so.
I'm good with that.
Mayor Pro Tem? Yes, do you have the time that you would like that ordinance to remove the 180 days? Be back to council.
Uh, would council like to see that on the sixth?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it has to go through a public hearing with the planning commission first, any changes, so we can try to fast-track it as much as possible through the planning commission.
Sure, so as soon as possible. Okay. All right, are there any further questions? Yay! Perfect timing. Okay, so that topic then is adjourned, and we're going to move on to the next topic on our agenda for this evening, and that will be to rescind the Resolution 858 Series 2020, which is a resolution declaring a local disaster emergency in and for the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, which touched the COVID-19 pandemic. Our county has relieved us of their emergency order, and the city intends to do the same, and I just need a motion, or unless there's discussion, and I don't see any, any participants in the audience. I see Bob's hand is still up, but I'm not sure.
Do you want council's input, or?
Oh, yeah. Everybody, I just, yeah. Please.
I just want, yeah, I'm totally in support of rescinding the ordinance, absolutely.
Resolution.
Resolution, sorry, yeah.
Anyone else? Give it straight.
Yeah.
Oh, his hands down, so he just left it up. And just on a, on a note with this emergency order, council has been able to participate by Zoom because of the emergency order. We do not currently have in our procedures a way for us to participate, so I've asked for the city attorney to draft us something so that we can create a resolution that will allow council members to participate by Zoom, either if you are on vacation or you are dealt. So, because I think if you want to participate, you should be able to, but it should be, if in person, most importantly, but if it can't be for whatever reason, then I would like you to still be able to participate by Zoom.
One comment on that, and I know this is slightly off-topic, but I'd like to see us continue the practice, even if we're all present, so that people can participate from home as well, because that's been really helpful.
The, the, the audience will still be able to participate by Zoom, it'll just be our presence in council that is, it's currently required, except we have some absence excuses, but we don't have a way to participate by Zoom currently, and I would like to see that happen.
I would just like to see that in some form so that it does not become habit and is used rarely.
Yeah.
And only in situations when it can't be avoided.
Right, and I think our city attorney will come up.
Yeah, it's a, it's a common aspect of council rules and procedure in other cities. So what I plan to do is go to get a bunch of cities and look at them and see what they've got in the way of remote participation guidance, so then you guys can decide what you wanna do.
I under, I understood that that was, with regards, the charter says that we can't participate remotely for a quasi-judicial, we can't vote, I'm sorry, in quasi-judicial, if we're remote, and from my perspective, I think, I know this isn't the time to discuss it, well, maybe it is, I think that's fine, because if I was on vacation and I couldn't attend, I think it's correct, I shouldn't be able to vote for quasi-judicial if I'm, if I'm not present, but as far as being able to remote, either being sick or whatever, you know, I don't have, I think, I think that.
That's the policy.
Is that the policy? Is that where it is in other, other counties too, or other cities?
You know what, I haven't done the work.
You have no.
Okay, I'll be able to be, sound more informed after I do the research.
Thank you.
I will.
Okay, let me see if I can do this, because this is a little convoluted the way it is. So I move that we approve rescinding Resolution Number 858 Series 2020, a resolution declaring a local disaster emergency in and for the city of Woodland Park, Colorado.
Ed, isn't this a work session? Are we able to actually formally make that?
Yes, we are, because we opened with a special meeting. This is a special meeting, we had a work session within the special meeting, so we could take care of business like that.
And just briefly, I do see that we do have a, an attendees hand up, and I'm not sure if it's for this topic, so are, are you all open to still continuing discussion before we?
We need a second, we have a motion on the table.
Oh, all right, I'll second it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have a second, and then I'm gonna go ahead and go to Mr. Brown and see if he had this topic that he wanted to speak about. Mr. Brown, if you're there, you're welcome to speak.
Can you hear me now?
We can, yes.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify, when, when the review is done to provide for, in certain circumstances, potential for Zoom meetings for the city council, that it also be looked at, that other, that other organizations within the city aside from just the council could also continue to use Zoom meetings as well.
Sure.
Yeah, excellent point.
Just, just make sure that both, both are included as well, and it may well be, and I haven't reviewed to see how much difficulty that might be, but just, I, I think it's important for all of our organizations to have that, that opportunity.
Excellent point.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
We'll do that, thank you.
Just have a motion by Councilmember Alfieri and a second by Councilmember Zulawaga. Would you like me to take the vote?
Sure.
Alfieri? Yes. Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries five zero.
All right.
Mayor Pro Tim, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to CRS Section 24 dash six dash 402, 4FI, for discussion of a personnel matter and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session, any member of this body or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or an elected official, or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters personnel to particular employees, and the following additional details are provided for identification purposes regarding the acting city manager position and recruitment of a city manager.
I'll second it.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries five zero. Can I make a comment for the public? So the meeting will remain open, because we're gonna go upstairs, we'll come back out, come back downstairs, see if there's any matters you want to vote on or anything like that, or direction, and then we'll close the public meeting. So if the audience at home wants to stay tuned, they can.
Oh.
And this is a council meeting, not work session.
Does that mean I have to behave?
All right, the time is now 8:17 PM and the executive session has been concluded. Will all participants in the executive session please state their name for the record? I'll start with Kelly.
Kelly Case.
Robert Zuluaga.
Russ D'Neil.
Stephanie Alfieri.
Jeffrey Wilson.
Hillary LaBarre. If any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I ask that you state your concerns now. Hearing none, we don't have a next agenda item, but we are going to...
Yes, we do. Number six.
Wait, where's my...I apologize. Number six, sorry, is to make a motion and/or direction regarding the city manager position. Like two.
I'll move that we approve posting the RFP for the city manager position as presented to us by the city attorney.
I'll second that.
So Alfieri and Zuluaga. LaBarre?
No.
Neil?
No.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
No.
Motion fails three-two.
So can I get a motion to...actually, we can just give direction to staff, can't we? Or do we need a motion?
I would, I would, I would make it a formal motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we direct staff to begin negotiations with our acting city manager, Michael Lawson, regarding assuming the city manager position. Is that adequate, Jeff?
The negotiator should not be me.
Oh, and the negotiator, I would suggest should be our mayor pro temp LaBarre. And with the assistance of our city attorney.
Would you like to direct staff to develop a contract?
I would. Thank you for finishing my motion for me, Jeff.
Can we repeat the motion then?
I made it.
Could you repeat it?
Do you want me to repeat? Seriously? I, I will make a motion to direct staff and Mayor Pro temp LaBarre to begin negotiations with our existing acting city manager, Michael Lawson, to negotiate a contract with the assistance of our city attorney. Did I get it all?
And we also would like to put a six-month probationary period in the contract.
With a six-month probationary period in the contract.
And the salary is blank.
And the salary to be blank. And?
Would you like?
Part of the negotiation.
Councilmember Zuluaga, do you want any information provided to you about the various benefits and which ones are negotiable and which ones are not?
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, I think all of the provisos of the motion with the conditions of the request of information have been put on the table. I second the motion now.
And the motion maker accepts that at all.
I was waiting for it to all come out.
Neil? Yes. Can we make comment discussion first?
Oh, that's true.
There, there can be discussion.
I, I'd just like to make a comment. I am not opposed to entering into a contract with the existing city manager, but my vote is going to reflect the fact that I do oppose not doing our due diligence in vetting all potential candidates before we make this decision.
And I want to also weigh in in that same vein. It's, it's fair to say that we have seen your performance, Michael, to be exceptional and really looks, you know, from the city standpoint, like you are a great fit. My concern is that it's, it's part of my responsibility as an elected official to cast a net of applicants to see what's there. COVID has changed a lot of dynamics in our, our culture. So whereas before, we have a history of the types of people who've applied for the city manager, I think not doing that doesn't let us see what's there. And in fairness to the citizens, my vote will also reflect that, which is no aspersion on you, but it's on the process.
And you guys are both comfortable with everything you've been able to have time to say.
Yes, thank you very much.
Because they wanted it on the record, so I wanted to make sure y'all felt good about that.
Sure. Is there any further discussion before we vote? No? Hearing none. Suzanne?
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
No.
Alfieri?
No.
Case?
Yes.
LaBarre?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries three-two. Thank you.
Can I just say, I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Thank you for that. And thank you for your trust in doing that. So it's much appreciated.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, counsel.